Good evening. It is Monday, April 2nd, 2012, pretty close to 7:30. This is a meeting, a regular meeting of Athens City Council. Tonight, we will have readings on several issues and vote on some. So, we're going to begin with disposition of establishment of a quorum. All council members are present, so that's a quorum. Disposition of minutes. We have minutes from the regular session held March 5th and regular session held March 19th, which need to be accepted. Could I have a motion?
I'm on second.
All those in favor of accepting these minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Communications. I don't have any communications that I know of. Mayor Wile?
Just want to mention, the City Plan Commission is planning to have a public hearing. That would be May 2nd at 7:15 in Room A of this Athens Community Center. This is concerning the rezoning of the Far East side on East State Street. So, it will be, as I say, May 2nd, Wednesday, 7:15. This is proposal of turning some of the area from R2 to R1 and other zones. We decided to have it at that location, so the neighbors can come. And again, this is, it's not required for the public plan commission, but eventually it'll be bounced to you as city council.
Thank you. Nadine Varan?
Yes, next Monday at committee meetings, I'd like to bring our income tax administrator with me and introduce you to her and talk about the CCA program that I brought up a couple of weeks ago, where we would contract with this company to help us collect delinquent, or find delinquent taxpayers. And I didn't take very good notes. There were a few questions that day, so I'm going to ask you to email me any questions if you remember from that last meeting, and so we can try to be prepared ahead of time. Like I said, I, what I wrote down, it doesn't make very much sense to me right now, so if you could let me know if you have any questions ahead of time. Otherwise, she and I will both be here next Monday to answer any questions regarding that program, next Monday.
Will you and/or she kind of give us a quick thumbnail sketch of the program?
Yes, yes, we absolutely can go over the program again. Because I haven't handed anything out to you, I wouldn't expect you to remember everything that we talked about. So, we'll have more details and be able to answer more questions next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Director. Tom Sauer?
I want to remind people, this Saturday, we're having a street tour, which is with Andy Stone, and it's open to the public. And if you would like to go, contact Debbie Walker. Starts at 8 o'clock, out in front of City Hall.
And the buses will be off at 8:30. Bus, the buses, depends on how many people we're going to have. Council members, remember, if you have special interest and you want to see on this tour, again, contact Debbie Walker, so that she can let Andy know and we can schedule it. Okay. Laura Director.
No, of course not, Mr. President.
Thank you. So, you actually took what I was going to say, number four. So, we're ready to go with ordinances for second reading. And on second reading, usually that's just what we do. We just read the title of the ordinance. There's not a lot of discussion at that time. Ordinance 4212. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application and enter into an agreement for the fiscal year 2012-13 Ohio Attorney General's Drug Use Prevention Plan. Ordinance 4312. An ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise and accept bids for construction and construction engineering to 2012 Water System Improvements, Project 264, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 4412. An ordinance declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for municipal purpose. Ordinance 4512. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Development for a community development block grant for calendar year 2013, federal fiscal year 2012. Ordinance 4612. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Buckeye Hills, with the Buckeye Hills Hocking Valley Regional Development District to administer the city's CDBG revolving loan fund. Ordinance 4912. An ordinance amending the 2012 appropriation ordinance. Ordinance 5012. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of telemetry software and radios for the water and wastewater treatment plants. Here we are at ordinance for first, ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 5112. An ordinance amending the 2012 appropriation ordinance introduced by Councilmember Nies.
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular ordinance has several sections to it, and what we are doing is appropriating various amounts of money that have been discussed in the committee, previous committee meeting. We will be taking $12,350 to the CCA fund, and this is a refund to the granting agency. There was a question last week about this particular grant, and the auditor has been able to verify for us, this was for unspent grant funds, that that'll be renewed. $100,000 to the general fund, and these are for retirement payouts, and those were briefly described last week in the committee meeting. Yes. And $21,000 to the general fund, and they are split out in the following, to the following accounts. Of that $100,000, 21 will be to the general fund, $24,500 to the general fund, and these are going into different transaction codes. Transaction code 100, transaction code 100, all of them. $41,000 to the general fund, and another $12,000 to the general fund, in various accounts for the particular city staff persons, the departments in which they reside. And so, that's the way that that $100,000 is divided. And, yes, I'm sorry, I've offered that whole explanation, and I need to request that we consider this under suspension of the rules.
Mainly because the money to be paid back in the CCA fund, the letters gave the city 30 days to pay that back. We brought it to council as soon as we were made aware of it from court personnel, but the 30 days ended today. So, it would be a little bit late, but if you could suspend this, then we can go ahead and return that money.
I second. Or, does it need to be seconded?
For suspension of the rules only. All those in favor of suspending the rules, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. And now, I move for adoption of ordinance 5112, with the financial details described previously.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of accepting ordinance 5112, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ordinance 5112 is approved and under suspension of the rules. Ordinance 5212. An ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29, Wellhead Protection Plan, and declaring an emergency. Number four.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to suspend the rules tonight. However, I've had indication from council members that there is still some discussion that would like to occur, so I guess at this point, I can't, so I will open it up for discussion.
Mr. President, I move to amend 39.01.05, Section D of the current ordinance, and two sections were struck, two numbers 16 and 17 were struck from the current ordinance, and I move that, I move to have them returned to the ordinance.
I second that. Okay, so we have a--
Would you like me to read those, 16 and 17? Number 16 is drilling, mining, exploration, and extraction operations, including but not limited to petroleum, natural gas, and minerals. And 17B added as well, the storage and/or disposal of wastewater and other byproducts associated with drilling, mining, exploration, and extraction operations. These two sections were originally recommended from the wellhead protection team when they reviewed the language for the review. And I'm suggesting that we amend them to be put back in.
Where were they in the, what?
Oh, they are in Section D of 39.01.05 on our copies. That is page 6 from the proposed--
Okay, we have a motion and a second to replace the, these two items that were struck in from the proposed, opposed. Do we have any discussion on that?
I have received comments from several citizens, and I know there is concern about adding these back in, and it's a difficult situation, but I also know that we have a ruling from our law director from the city, who has stated that Ohio Division of Department of Natural Resources has the jurisdiction in this area.
Mr. President, if I might, I probably should, it would be appropriate for me to make a statement on that, since I've done that up. First off, I'd just like to thank both members of council and the numerous people from the administration and from the community who put in so much work on drafting these revisions to the wellhead protection ordinance. Local government has no bigger responsibility, as far as I'm concerned, than the, than working to do everything it can within its power to protect the drinking water that we all, that we all share. That said, you know, the position of law director is not a policymaking position. I'm an advisor, and it is you, the members of council, that have the legislative authority vested in you, and it is not, you know, the duty of a law director to tell you what you can or cannot do. But I do feel it is appropriate to make sure that you are aware of the relevant laws, and I feel like I've done everything I can to do that. In fact, just again, tonight, I did distribute a copy of the ORC 1509-02, with the highlighted relevant portions, in which the state of Ohio, well, I won't paraphrase, I'll just read directly from the relevant parts, that the division has, the Division of Mineral Resources, has the sole and exclusive authority to regulate the permitting, location, spacing of oil and gas and production operations within the state, and that this chapter of the ORC and the rules adopted under it constitute a comprehensive plan with respect to all aspects of the locating, drilling, well stimulation, completing, and operating of oil and gas wells within this state. So, there are various parts of the wellhead protection plan which are being changed, and obviously, some of those are more relevant than others when it comes into potential issues with, with that. So, I want to make very clear, though, that I am not sitting up here as the law director and saying that you can or cannot do anything, but that you have been informed of the law. Many of you, I think, were aware of that already, just because so much research and so much hard work has gone in by so many of the members. But I did just want to state that, that it is up to you to determine what you want to do on this.
Can you, could you answer one question for me? Your wording or the message we received last week was that having the, including, inclusion of those clauses was not defensible. Can you--
I wouldn't go, I would not--
Define that.
I would not use those words, and the reason I wouldn't is because if in the event, I mean, whatever passes, and there's always a possibility, of course, that it could, that there could be some sort of a court action taken, and I'm in the position as law director of having to defend whatever the council decides to pass, whatever gets passed into law. And so, therefore, I don't think it would be very advisable for me to stand up here and to say, oh, this is indefensible, and then have to go to a court and say, you know, we've got to try to defend what was done here today. So, I will, I will say that I think that certain portions of the wellhead protection ordinance are more problematic potentially than others, and leave it at that. Hope that sort of answers your question.
I had a question also.
Okay, go on.
There's an issue of separability of the, if, my concern is, if we put in the two questionable sections, that any legal proceedings would hold up the application of all the changes that we are making. And if that's true, we have to balance that, because there are many things, especially, you know, looking at the injection well, which is something that's very strong, and in my mind, probably has a lot more protective force to it than other things, especially given the fact that we're probably under more threat from injection wells, that it would hang out in limbo for a couple of years, and that we would have little protection from the new, stronger changes that we're making to the, to the ordinance.
Yeah, I would, and I, this is all, I don't want to say speculation, not speculation, but typically, if a challenge were brought to a law that council passed, then there would be an injunction against that law going into effect, if that is what you're asking.
So, that means that the strengthening against prohibition against all injection walls would be put at risk, potentially, would be part of the injunction, until the whole proceedings go through.
Potentially.
Okay. Mayor, did you have--
I would just mention, I think the term "non-defensible" was actually the service safety's director's coinage.
Okay.
So, it's not Pat's.
Okay.
Just for clarification, clarification.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, do you know if the Public Works Director received the letter back from ODNR? He was requesting some information from there?
No, as far as I know, they haven't.
And that was several weeks ago, he asked for clarification?
Yes.
Permitting in a wellhead? And they've not responded?
Nope. We're a long way from Columbus sometimes. The question was about permitting wells being drilled in--
What supersedes? Ohio EPA, city laws, Department of Natural Resources?
Any other, oh--
I just want to comment, I think the most likely scenario would be that the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, if this, these amendments were passed and the whole ordinance then passed, is not going to go to court immediately and sue us, because, oh, they just found out that Athens City just passed an ordinance that may or may not interfere with their jurisdiction. It's more likely if a company came to town and decided, I want to plant a well here, and they read the ordinance, then they would take us to court. The problem I would have, if I was a company wanting to drill a well, is I want to make money. Lawsuits cost money, they take time. Two-year injunction means, for two years, I can't do anything. I'm an injunction to two, I, you know, until that law is decided, one way or the other, I can't do anything. So, is that worthwhile for me to come here, then, and sink several billion dollars into a project where, depending on how the judge felt that day, it could go against me? And I think if we put this tool in our toolbox, it's just something else that's going to help prevent someone coming in here and doing just that. If it's not there, then there's really nothing, nothing at all to prevent them. They're just going, well, okay, fine. I don't see anything to stop this legally.
Okay. Either a comment?
Yeah, it seems to me that, that the state law that contradicts, in my opinion, the state law that is at question here, contradicts our responsibility and our mandate to protect the city's water supply. And that's, that's why we're stuck in a situation where there's disagreement and the possibility of passing something into law that, in some eventuality, may end up in court to be tested. If this is passed, the amendments, it may be difficult to defend it in court, but it may not. We really don't know how this would play out, or if future state regulations might come into effect, we would hope that would, that would provide these protections. But that being said, my opinion is that we need to do an all of the above in terms of what we can put into place that has, has a chance of protecting our water supply, given the, given the situation with the land that some of our water comes from today. And so, that's, that's my opinion in support of these amendments.
Other council members? So, we have a motion and a second to, to bring these, to amend by putting 16 and 17 language back into the ordinance. Okay? All those in favor of amending the ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
I heard five to two. The ordinance is amended, so clauses 16 and 17 will be reinserted. Will we go back to first reading?
Yes.
Yes, back to first reading. Will we have any other discussion we need to let consider? Number four.
Look, I think it needs to sit for a week.
Okay. Okay, so we are finished with our agenda. Do we have our announcements and other business? Another, one more time, we're going to announce the bus at the street tour, which leaves in front of City Hall. Please leave here at 8 o'clock. Buses will leave at 8:30. This is to review the service, the Director Stone's proposal for street repairs this summer. Council goes along to learn and to express their opinions. This is a public group, anybody can come. If you wish to, please contact Debbie Walker, our clerk, so that she can make sure that we have enough transportation for everybody. Number rise.
This is a public meeting of council, correct? Even though we're on a bus?
Even if we're on two buses.
You know, on two buses, okay. So, the public is invited. Is the press invited also?
They're specifically invited.
There's a third bus, a bus for the press.
I thought we had a little red wagon for them.
Okay. Do we have any other business committees that want to meet next week?
Maybe.
Maybe?
Maybe.
Okay. That's, that's worth putting down.
Finance personnel.
Anybody else that decides later in the week, please, again, that letter, go to know.
And how about the town hall meeting, the 14th?
Okay, the mayor did talk about that.
Oh, the town hall meeting, the 14th? It's for housing issues. I forget the actual time, I'd have to look it up real quick.
6:30, I believe.
6:30, 8:30, Community Center? I think it's a public hearing, but town hall meeting's happening too, and this is for housing, housing issues with people who have problems. It should be, I, I think you can probably get, we're putting an agenda together, so it'll be instructive. You may want to have a transportation committee meeting after the street tour, I assume? Or will it all end up in finance personnel?
I find all the streets are wonderful.
Quite possibly.
Okay, just wondering.
Okay. Number Butler?
Thank you. Wednesday, I will likely be participating in a safety, utility, transportation meeting with the Public Works Director, and there may be two other council members present, I'm not sure as of yet, but that might be the case.
Okay, so, that's a maybe.
Correct, and meeting is scheduled for 1:15 at the Public Works Director's office.
Okay. Now, we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items in city services not covered on the agenda. I want to make an announcement, at the urging of other council members, most council members. This, if you were here to speak about fluoridation, we've heard comments for the last several months, we've had what we were promoted as experts come and talk about both sides. Member Gosney has offered to do a, to host a forum, public forum, on this issue. And so, if you, if there is, if there is information that we do not have, you're certainly welcome to come speak to us. We, we have an open mic here. We may decide that we will have to take some kind of action, legal action, to restrict this open mic, if we feel that it is being abused. So, however, tonight, if you have new information regarding anything, you're certainly welcome to speak. With that in mind, anybody else have, member Gosney?
Just a question on the legal action, I think what you meant was an amendment of council rules to--
To, with some direction about how many times you can come talk to us about the same thing.
Yeah, we're not suing anybody.
I'm sorry. Did you make a sound like that? Oh, no. No. I haven't ever sued anybody. Something new. With that in mind, anybody like to come speak to us? Remember, you need to give us your name and address, you need to sign in, the little red light will time you three minutes. Your, your time will not start until you've signed in. Okay. I see some, go ahead.
Box 2323, Athens. I'm just kind of shocked by these last comments, this kind of changes what I've been saying, but I don't think any citizen should be stopped, limited, restrained, muzzled from giving their opinion about policies that relate to them, and city government's the best way to do it. And for you, President Sands, to make a comment like that is, I just see that very undemocratic. I mean, we're named Athens after Athens, Greece, where they had probably the best democracy we've seen so far, and you're, he just kind of seems like an oxymoron, really. But I want to talk also about the, the amendments that were added back to the bill, the prohibition of drill, drilling. I like to say that's a good example of the local government knows best. We know what's best for us, and the OD, having ODNR tell us, we can't stop this, that's ridiculous. That's when local government needs to stand up and take a stand, and I think from tonight's vote is actually what happened. And the ones that voted not to put them back in because of fear of some lawsuit by state bureaucracy is, should just be ashamed of themselves. And that's just, that gets back to the issue of water fluoridation. It's against my consent, and just like the Ohio Health Department refuses to acknowledge what, an order on it, just like Jeff Reisner just said that ODNR's not, or not Jeff Reisner, but Michelle Pappy said that ODNR has not given a response back after, I think, the service safety director mailed them. So, it just shows a lack of help from the state government, and that local government knows best, and we can do what's right for us. And that's all I have to say.
Dane Waller from 155 Morris, and I'm also quite disturbed by the comment I just heard. United States of America, I thought had a First Amendment, but apparently it's being eroded. But anyway, today, I brought a statement from the National Treasury Employees Union, Chapter 280, and I'm just going to read some brief excerpts for you guys from this. The following documents wire our union, the National Treasury Employees Union, Chapter 280, took the stand at dead oppose in fluoridation of drinking water supplies. Our union is comprised of and represents approximately 1,500 scientists, lawyers, engineers, and other professional employees at the EPA headquarters in Washington, DC. These aren't just quack scientists, they work at the EPA in DC. And this is one of the studies, and their many statement, and their statement here, I'm not going to read them all, I'm just going to pick out a few here. Regarding the effectiveness-- Regarding the effectiveness of fluoride in reducing dental cavities, there has not been any double-blind study of fluoride's effectiveness as it carries preventative. There have been many, many small-scale selective publications on this issue that proponents cite to justify fluoridation, but the largest and most comprehensive study, one done by dentists trained by the National Institute of Dental Research on over 39,000 school kids between 5 and 17, shows no significant differences in terms of dental carries. So that means that, this is 36,000 kids, science, this is peer-reviewed science, showing that there's no significant difference between fluoridated and unfluoridated communities. So there's no point to having inner water, we're paying for it, it doesn't help what it says it's supposed to help. The own, EPA's own scientists in DC know it doesn't help. I mean, what more do we have to do to get the point across? I mean, we've, we've brought research to you guys, I know some members have actually looked at the research, but the majority, I mean, we're bringing this to you because we are concerned about you, our whole community. We're not, we don't waste our time every two weeks just come up here to hear ourselves talk. We have a legitimate concern, and we'd like you guys to do something about it. I mean, we will continue collecting signatures for a ballot initiative, but it would be a gesture of good faith if you guys could do something legislatively, since you're the ones that put it in, not saying the members directly, but our council put it in in 97 slash 2002. So, I mean, it would be a gesture for you guys to take it out. But I would just like to scroll down here and read the conclusion to their statement. The implication for the general public of these results is clear. Recent peer-reviewed toxicity data, when applied to the EPA standard method for controlling risks from toxic chemicals, require an immediate halt to the use of the nation's drinking water reservoirs as disposal sites for the toxic waste of the phosphate fertilizer industry and other industries. This is directly from EPA scientists. I hope you guys make the right decision, thank you.
Thanks, Dane.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Chris Corral, I live at 19 Nuclear Drive, Athens, Ohio. I just wanted to actually talk about a little bit more of a general note. I saw the article that was in the Athens News, that you guys, you know, actually had a discussion talking about this issue of fluoridating the water. I think it was, it was really great. I just want to know, like, are we going to get, like, an actual time on when this discussion in the city's going to happen, where we can bring in some people? I think that definitely needs to happen if it is, because apparently my understanding is that in 1970, we already had a referendum, and then now this local level of piece of legislation exists. I think if we just remove that, the exemption comes back into place. I know that, when we talked about in that article, that there was going to be some fines that we're going to maybe face if we remove this fluoride from the water, fluoride, excuse me. And I just don't think that, I think we can challenge that. Apparently, there's like 30 other cities that have already done this in Ohio. So we need to, I guess, talk to them, figure out how they did that, because, I mean, it's ridiculous. Like I said, you've heard more research on how this is bad, how it's actually medicating the public illegally, in my opinion. So I just think that, you know, this, like, town discussion is going to happen, it needs to happen soon. We're continually, you know, hurting people with fluoridating the water. If, if our job is to protect the city's water, I mean, I think we're not holding you that, you're holding you to that one, because I don't think we're doing that right now. Again, so I think we just need to get that meeting started, so we can actually get this ball rolling. Again, challenge that government mandate that I just don't feel like it really needs to be in place. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Other members?
Hi, my name is Dane McCarthy, and I live at 9930 Montserrat Ridge Road. And basically, I don't want to talk about fluoride or hexafluorocilic acid. Basically, that's what's being put in the water. Basically, I want, I would like to just briefly say that this is not a personal attack against anyone in this room. It's really about an issue which is just purely medical, and it's a, it's more of a political. I think it really comes down to politics and, of, of big government and corporations, multinational corporations. And I think we all have to understand that Athens, as a very progressive community, would naturally be concerned about not just this issue, but a lot of other issues. And I think what we'll be seeing in the future is more and more people being sort of activated, because it's not just happening in Athens, it's not just happening in Ohio, it's not just happening in the United States. This is global, okay? So you're going to be, if it's not this issue, it's going to be another issue. So you really need to just roll with it, and relax, and try to enjoy yourselves a little bit, instead of feeling like, "Oh, my God, I just can't take this anymore, this is so boring. Why can't I go home?" They're just saying the same thing over and over again. We will try to make it more entertaining for you as, as time goes on. And I think that entertainment value is important. I think that, that the process of getting things done can be fun, you know, and can be enjoyable. And that's really what this is all about. We can have fun together as a community and talk amongst ourselves, and, you know, we're always going to have differences. There's no possible way that everybody's always going to feel the same way about things, you know? What is the effect of hexafluorocilic acid on human health? I mean, we're batting this thing back and forth for months, and some people have, you know, the facts. I think personally, the facts, you know where I stand on it, the facts are the facts, they speak for themselves. But, so try to think the long term, this is not going away, everything is going to continue to roll forward in Athens. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Okay, my name is Terri Anne Smith, and I live at 4826 Old U.S. Route 33. It's technically in the county. I do own a business in the city limits at 21 Kern Street, where I use water. And I am going to talk about fluoridation, I don't care what Jim Sands says, because I have a First Amendment, and on your agenda for today, it says we can talk about whatever we want. So you can't just change that in the middle of a meeting. So, anyway, I have some information to give everybody about the EPA. And I had a heated discussion with Jim Sands and Jeffrey Reisner in the office before the meet, before this meeting, about, I told them that I was just doing some research, and I found out that, this is a new, this is new information, apparently, because you disagreed with me, and you don't think, or Jim Sands disagreed with me. And I found in the EPA's records that sodium fluoride, fluoride is a registered pesticide with the EPA. It's registered within the EPA guidelines as a pesticide. So why, what comes to my mind is why is fluoride a pesticide? And also, something really good to put in your mouth, you know? Why would the EPA condone both things, or both, you know, uses for this, for this chemical? And, well, you know, I was doing some other research, and if you look at who runs the EPA, I've got, I found out this really great, these really great, this great document from Source Watch, and it documents all of the people in administrative positions in the EPA, and how at one point, you know, one couple of years, they'll be with the EPA, and then another couple of years, they'll be with, like, a waste company, a chemical waste company, or the executive of a hazardous waste company. So the schizophrenia is, you know, is right here in this, in this document. This explains to you why, you know, the EPA says, "Oh, fluoride's a wonderful thing." So, and also, if you read your toothpaste, when you go home, read your toothpaste and read it, it says, "May help with tooth, whatever, it may help your teeth." And then right under it, it says, "Don't swallow, if you swallow it, consult," or "Go to the emergency." Actually, it says, "Go to emergency immediately, because you could die." So here's, here's, I want to give these to everybody. So this explains why we have, you know, like, this strange EPA behavior, because there's people running it, you know? So, oh, you've got one, yeah. Oh, by the way, this man here, no, wait, I got to talk about Jeffrey.
Yeah, please.
One second. This man here, I told him, I told him that I was on the internet researching, and he said, "Oh, the internet, yeah, and you're into UFOs and all that." So he, he thinks the internet is just for UFO research, this Mr. Reisner guy. Because he totally, like, downplayed that I researched on the internet. Okay, I'll give you these, and there you go. Oh, you got one, you get one? There you go. This is really interesting, like, these people, you should research all these people that run the EPA, and there are other intermediary interests.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else? We're going to close the floor. Okay, it is 8:11, we're done.